Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay.
Better you than me. My God, crap, I can't see.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I promise.
Oh, yes. Good evening. Gotta make my rounds. Been a while. The what? That's our local orchestra.
Hey Luigi, we do have a quorum. If it's, if it's not okay for you to be doing this, you can log out.
I'm okay right now.
Okay.
Yeah, he just said if I say I gotta go, it means he's gotta go.
Okay.
Yep, so.
And I'm gonna stay muted unless I have to unmute it, just for my radio.
Okay.
All right, well, at six, six thirty, we'll call this city council meeting to order Thursday, the third day of April. Welcome, everybody that's here, and appreciate you coming. Uh, we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance led by myself, and then a moment of prayer, or prayer or moment of silence, um, by council member Wilson. Everybody stand and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not much of a prayer gal, so we're just gonna sit for a moment of silence and reflect on what we've been doing over the last week. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from last meeting. Did anybody see any corrections, or how about a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from March twentieth meeting.
As ready. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, public comment. Um, I'm gonna start this off real quick. We did receive a letter through email, uh, that was asked to read out loud. It's, um, quite lengthy. Rachel, would you like to read that, or would you like me just to reference it and have it put into the minutes?
Um, I'd like you to read it, since you've read other comments that have been submitted similarly. As the mayor, you've read other comments that have been emailed that have been similarly lengthy.
I, I've referenced them, but I have not read them.
All right, I'll read it.
Okay.
Uh, to be, um, fully disclosed, this letter was submitted by my husband. Um, he is an art major, not an English, English major, so please bear with, um, me, please. Uh, it was submitted by Jeremy Beal, address forty-one thirty-eight West, twenty-six hundred North, Plain City. Statement to be read during the Plain City Council meeting. First, I would like to thank the council and mayor for reading this statement. I would have liked to address the concern personally, but being that I work on average eleven hours a day to ensure the medical expenses and needs of our son is covered, I won't be available during this meeting. This statement is pertaining to the concerns that were submitted regarding the work being done on our house. I will go point by point, not necessarily in order. First to be addressed is the question on the home being too close to the road. This, changes in the weather have given me sinus issues, please bear with me. Too close to the road. This matter has been brought up by the same person more than once, and despite the plot map submitted when the building license was issued with all distancing listened, listed and approved, to verify and put this concern to rest, the building inspector came out to measure only to find that the structure is more than twelve feet further away from the road than what is required. This was addressed and proven to exceed requirements, yet it is still being brought up as a point of harassment. As for the mentioning that we should keep the home in line with its original placement and the surrounding houses, simply put, this is not an HOA, and there are no such rules that a house has to be equal distance from the road to match the houses next door. Nor is there any regulation that say that every house in the area has to look alike. It truly shows the unreasonable excuses fabricated and stretched to force a problem that does not exist. For the next point, this build has been issued a building permit, and in doing so, has to get regular scheduled inspections to make sure that it is built to code. We have had and passed all required inspections to this point, plus an extra couple inspections that we requested to make sure everything was up to par. The city even requested that we don't do that anymore because the set inspections are all that is needed. The next inspection will be coming up in the near future. After passing, then we will be able to put the exterior on the house, which I believe will silence the naysayers. This is all done as a part of government oversight to ensure safety in the build. To suggest that only licensed professionals can do acceptable work is naive and quite insulting to everyone who has the skills to do a job. The next two concerns will be addressed together because though separated, they are the same concern based on misguided assumptions, false accusations, and straight up lies. Yes, we are living in the home. However, this is not a remodel, this is going on throughout the entire home. This is in addition to the home. The integrity of the original home is still exactly as it was when construction began. There is no work being done inside the original home, so living conditions are exactly the same as if there was no construction being done. This is where the greatest issue comes in. This crossed the line going from concerns to hostility. This crossed the line going from concerns to hostility. We have showed the letter you composed to many people, including a lawyer, and all agree on this point. As the lawyer put it, in this part of your complaint moves it into the area of harassment with malicious intent. The veiled threat to have a health and human service officer, social services come in to remove kids and family from our home based on the blatant lies that there is no power, plumbing, or heat. The wording was carefully crafted to be used as a threat to the family. It's also concerning that they admittedly looked in the windows like a peeping tom and seeing no real problems decided to focus on boxes of flooring stacked neatly and safely out of the way under the window, claiming it to be a fire hazard. A very large stretch of the imagination to get that type of idea, unless you know something about engineered flooring spontaneously combustion that I have not been made aware of. As a concerned neighbor, if you would like to look at the home where we live, you are more than welcome. There are no dangers, no fire hazards, and you can even borrow the bathroom so you can see that the water works fine. We would also invite you to take off your jacket and visit for a while, being that you are our neighbor. The home is heated and very comfortable. Now for the more serious part. I have witnessed other people having kids taken from their homes based on false accusations under a full, until a full investigation was done. In the case I am referring to, the kids were put in foster care for three months while the investigation was proven to be a lie submitted because someone was mad at the person they accused. The kids in that time experienced severe emotional and psychological trauma. The reason we added a lawyer to the list of people reading this complaint is because we feel the threat against our kids is substantial. Right now, we have no plans to start any litigation, but should this complaint lead to harassment or physical, emotional, or psychological trauma to our kids, especially our special needs child, due to unfounded falsehoods that were clearly worded in ways to promote misinformation and deceit, then we will open a full case as allowed by law. That out of the way, the final point that we will speak about is the elephant in the room. Based on everything written in the complaint and other conversations, obviously, the biggest concern is that the house is an unfinished state. So in the simplest way to put it, these concerned neighbors of Plain City find our unfinished house to be ugly. I will be the first one to say that I want to have a finished exterior on the home as well, if not more so. But there are clear steps and inspections that have to be done first. Even if the outside doesn't change fast, there is a lot of work taking place that is not seen. All still part of the building process and required for the next building inspection. It is a lot of work that let's put into perspective. As per the National Home Builders Association, the average man-hours needed to build in addition the size that we are building, it takes approximately five thousand one hundred seventeen hours. Now, in the case of big builders that have around two dozen people working eight to ten hour days, they hit that number in six to eight weeks. A single person working non-stop twenty-four hours a day, no breaks, no sleep, no stopping, would be working two hundred thirteen point two one days. To this point, I have put in two thousand seven hundred seventy-eight man-hours. Little over half of the time estimated time to complete the project. It is being worked on every opportunity available to do so. In the complaint letter, it is stated that they understand that finances may be a factor for not hiring out all the work, and to some degree, that is true. Just to the point that we are right now, we have saved eighty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents worth in the labor charges. Which means that with the remaining hours to finish, it will be double that saved just in labor. That is a lot of equity to goes right to the house. That aside, as you have heard, there are thousands of man-hours left to go. If the speed of the project is an issue for anyone, we would happily accept any donated time to come help finish the project. If you are not well-versed in the construction, that is okay. There are many parts that don't involve swinging a hammer or using a saw. Things that take time but are still important to continue progress. We would happily accept your volunteer time. If you don't have the time yourself and feel a licensed professional is the only way, then we would not turn away anyone that you personally would hire as a professional to help in your stead. To finish this statement, we would just sum everything up. It is really quite simple. All the work that has been done and that will be done will be inspected as per building code. This construction is not hindering or impairing the livability or safety of the home, of its residents. If anything, the home is safer and in better condition than it was when originally purchased. And the distancing and spacing of the home of the property is all up to code and city-state regulations and ordinances. And finally, for those that find the house to be an eyesore, that will change as soon as the next inspection is complete. If it is unbearable to you, until then, I can only apologize the home may offend you and suggest focusing on the road when you drive by rather than staring at the unfinished home. That was the end of the very lengthy public comment. Thank you for bearing with it.
Thank you. All right, we will now open it up to other public. Take two to three minutes and say what you'd like to say. Come on up to the mic. You have to give us your name and address and, yep. Right there. Front and center.
If I had to talk in the mic, you do too.
My name's Angela Nixon, I live at twenty-five eleven North, forty-four twenty-five West. And it's concerning the new construction that is being talked about with the Weineger project. My sister Lynette Singleton, that owns the property, was here last week. She did not know there was a time to oppose and to speak up. And she asked me to come and oppose, which I do deeply oppose. And so does my son that lives there, Joseph Polly. We got a lot of concerns. How much of the property are you gonna take to widen up the road? Are you gonna put sidewalks in to make it safe for all the little kids that are around? There's already just enough room for one car to go one way on that road. What do you plan on doing for safety in Plain City altogether? We know the sheriff's deputy is very shorthanded, and there's not enough deputies to be out patrolling at all times. You're gonna bring in a lot of new houses. You know, wha- what are those concerns that you're gonna address? How are you gonna address those?
So that'll all be addressed going through the planning process of the development.
And is there any way we can stop it?
Every landowner has a right to develop their property as per the future land use map that's provided and created. It's usually about every five to seven years. We are reopening that future land use map. Can you pull that up real quick? And we'll just show you what the future land use map shows. So you can see the sewer ponds down there with the green around them. Right, see the blue? So the property is pretty much just south of that, and then it comes up. There's a, I don't know, couple hundred foot wide piece that ties into, what road is that that it'll tie into?
Twenty-five hundred.
Is it twenty-five? Okay, so that's the road that they're referring to, um, with no sidewalks and such. But all this, all this stuff will be addressed through the general plan. The color of the general plan right there is that lighter tan, or kind of pinkish tan. And that's our medium deserty, medium density eighteen-five. And so, when we done the future land use map, uh, back in seventeen, right? Is when it was completed. That's what was designated for that future land use. So, this is, we've used this as our bible when any developers come in with any property to, to keep them to that development standard.
So is this available to?
Yeah, it's on the website. Yep. If you go, uh, under maps, it'll say general plan. Go to the general plan, and then you'll scroll all the way down to the bottom.
Do they have any plans of taking any of the property away from the four houses on that road in the affected area?
That I don't know. Not the developer, the developer wouldn't.
Okay.
No, if, if anything, we would need to look at, like you said, sidewalks. That's what I wrote down was, we'll have to look at what we can do to get sidewalks up that street if, if relevant, so.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna bring in a lot of people. Are they gonna be half acres or quarter acres, do you know?
Eighteen-five, so eighteen thousand five hundred square feet, so they're just under horse property. Horse property requires twenty thousand, or no, it's a full half acre. So, um, like twenty-one thousand or something, give or take a few.
No plans to change it to a quarter?
No, quarter acres is not an option. So see the green around the sewer plant there? That is designated as open space or trails. There is an option for an overlay to be applied to that, where that would give them, basically, it would give them third acre density, but no lower. And that, that would require them to donate ground and, and money to create a park or something to that effect.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I did get another letter. Are you gonna, are you gonna read it? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Todd Moyes, and I live right there on forty-four seventy West. On, right, just north of it, and I own some ground right below my house. And it was considered wetland down there. And we've had them out in the past, and they've designated as a flood zone. I had to have flood zone on my ground and all that. And they've come out and designated that whole area is wetland and flood zone area. And so I'm wondering, when they come in twenty-seventeen to build it, they, they denied them then, and they picked their pipe up and left it because of that. What has changed now?
So that, that would all go through the development standard review. If there are wetlands, if there are flood plains, then we would have to look at our flood plain ordinance. Um, and see, see what that development would allow, right? So that'll all be considered. The rezone is just the rezone, right? That's just changing the use from Ag-two to eighteen-fives.
So if it's agricultural at, at eighteen-five, and when it was horse land at half acres, how come you're going down under a half acre when it was agricultural to horse lands? And you need, I've had neighbors that's had horses on a half acre, and it's pretty stinky, and it's not fair to the neighbors or the horses.
Yeah, and we, we don't allow horses on eighteen-five.
So they're not gonna have horses on it?
Now, in the eighteen-five, they can develop larger lots that would allow horses, right? If they wanted to build some half acre lots in there, some true half acre lots, then they could.
Wouldn't they need to be more like two acre lots to have horses at that?
No, our ordinances allow horses on half acre.
That, that's just it on the half acre then.
So.
But still, they have to have the Corps of Engineers approve this before they?
It'll go through environmental, it'll go through all sorts of
So this is just?
Stuff before it's approved.
So why are we rezoning before we even know if, if it can even be built down there?
Because the landowner has rights.
Okay, so I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, well, I oppose it until we get to see all the plans and everything on it.
Okay.
'Cause I don't know, he hasn't said if you're putting condos down there, or fourplexes.
There won't be no condos.
Skyscraper, you know, we don't know what's happening.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna say, if he wants to read that zone, he could, just so he understands what he can put there.
Um, I'm Cami Whitaker, I'm at twenty-six fourteen North, forty-two seventy-five West. Um, I'm opposing on this new construction as well. I've been a resident of Plain City for over twenty-five years, as my mom's been over thirty-five years. I feel as a Plain City resident, Plain City's kinda done us wrong as residents. We're supposed to be this small town and have a great small town, and we keep building and building. My question, because the sewer's already overloaded, you smell it every night, what is this gonna do for our sewer?
So our sewer is nowhere near overloaded. We can, we can handle up to a population of like fifteen thousand. Our flow rate, our discharge rate is nine hundred thousand gallons per day. We're not even close to that. We're operating at around four fifty, four hundred fifty thousand, maybe five hundred thousand gallons per day.
I was gonna say, is there a reason why we're smelling it so bad every night? I'm gonna say it's terrible.
It gets ripe sometimes.
Yeah, it's been almost daily.
Crap, crap stinks, right? But, uh, yeah, it, it could be turning over, there's, there's multiple reasons. The ice cap just came off not long ago. Bugs die, bugs are what processes our sewer treatment plants, so.
Perfect. But yeah, I wanted to get up and oppose as well. I do feel that we, there's not a lot of people that know about this city council meeting. And I feel we'd have a lot more up here if it was known, so.
Yeah, so we advertised to anybody who lives within five hundred feet of the property. There, there should have been a letter. Yeah, that was a public hearing for the, for the planning commission that that was advertised for. And then all of our Facebook, or all of our city council meetings are on Facebook. We have a YouTube channel. We, we've done quite a bit, uh, and on the Plain City Facebook page and website are all of our meeting dates and times. So we, we try to get it out there as good as we can.
Okay.
Without setting.
On the Plain City website, um, you can click a button, and it will notify you of all meetings, uh, public hearings, meetings, planning commission, and city council. If you wanna know of any meetings that we're having, it'll send it straight to your inbox.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to get up and speak? Going once? All right.
Hi, my name's, uh, Bill Moyes. Uh, I live at twenty-six oh-nine North, forty-four twenty-five West. And, uh, I've lived there pretty much my whole life, and, uh, that's always been designated as wetlands back there. In fact, if you go out where they're going to build right now, there's a lot of ducks and geese, and there's been no, uh, environmental studies done yet, and, uh, I was kinda concerned about the dumps. In fact, we had a burn-off today, and I hope the people that build down there know what they're in for, because the sewer does stink, and the smoke from the, uh, the, uh, the dumps is pretty bad at times. So that would be my concerns as far as that goes. And I also would like to see at least acre lots. This Plain City's been known to have a big enough place to have chickens and goats and whatever you wanna have on your place. I don't know why we're cramming everything so tight to make it, uh, like West Valley City. I mean, we're gonna be West Valley City here in about five years, the way we're going. But I oppose this until we get more information. I just wanted to be on record, thanks.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in Zoom land that wishes to speak? Okay. All right, thank you for all the comments. We will go through those and, and look at them when we, when the development finally hits us, so those will all be addressed. Thank you. All right, report from the planning commission. With an O and four start.
O and seven.
Seven.
Mister Mayor, O and seven. Thanks, thanks for getting that on public record. Sure my brothers will be happy to know I said that. So, uh, planning commission, last week, uh, we discussed the following. We, we did an approval for, uh, a site development on a commercial existing building for Joe and Amber Dunn. They're taking one of the facilities near the new Cody Reese building and turning it into a salon. You know, tenant improvement. Uh, they, they had some plans and, and it seemed, everything seemed up to par. So we, we did approve that one. We then went into, uh, discussion about about public hearing about the pitch, the property we're discussing tonight. And had a lot of, a lot of similar comments that were said to us, some of those regarding, it was, was the traffic. You know, the increase in traffic, the, the ingress egress for streets into the property. What exactly constitutes a rezone, you know, and we, we tried to, uh, to clarify some of those. Then we went into the rezone for that property, which was recommended to you and you're discussing tonight. Um, we also had a discussion, an approval for the approval extension of homestead acres, which was tabled. Um, there was a lot of, uh, items regarding the, the irrigation ditch that we had in our motion, uh, earlier last year. And, uh, some of those didn't, did not seem to be addressed. He was going to get back with us on that. So that, we'll, we'll have that up for another motion in a, in a couple of weeks. We went through our, our ordinance changes regarding development agreement and building regulations. You guys should see that coming in the next, uh, next few weeks. Uh, we have that on our agenda to talk about next planning commission. We should be making a motion on that. We had, uh, Zach from Hanson Engineers, it was great to have him kind of explain to us what we were doing and why we needed those changes, and, and for the most part, we were pretty in favor of, of, of law, of most of them. We did recommend some revisions to that too, though. And that, I believe, is all we discussed in commission. So if you guys have anything that you want me to take back to the commission, please let me know.
I got nothing.
Jared, I wanna know, do we have like, I don't even know what to call it, but like a step-by-step of how you would want to like build a subdivision?
Yes, we do, in our
For one?
It, it is in our ordinance, it is comp- It, it, it is in our ordinance, it is complicated, uh, with the state requirements they have put on us, um.
Read it and I don't understand it, so.
Yeah, I can totally.
Simplify it for me.
I can totally understand that, you've read, you've read chapter eleven then.
Yeah, and I'm like.
Yeah, and we gave, that's why we included that diagram about the approval process and how it works, you know, because we, we had to align ourselves with what the, what the state legislature was, was.
Right.
Requiring of us too, so.
The state making it easy for everyone.
They are not, it is, it is much more complicated in this case, and it seems a lot more difficult, especially with developers and from, from the, the city side too.
Yeah, so number one is rezoning.
Only if they need to.
Okay.
Right, and then in this case of this development, that's what needs to happen.
So rezoning doesn't mean it's approved?
No, it does not.
So could you point where this is for me?
Can you make that full screen?
And keeping in mind that it is touchscreen.
Yeah, that's why I did touch it. I've seen too many.
It wasn't hot, but I see.
Too many people touch it and mess it up, and like, oh, oh, we're gonna have an expert.
Just tap.
He's gonna try and make it.
Just tap full screen up top by the X.
Yep. It, it's, it's changed since we.
Alright.
But it's, it's right here.
Okay.
If I got that right?
So, yeah.
If I could, I would draw on it for you, but.
Yeah, I know.
Can't do that. So, you know, right next to our, our sewer pond here, and it includes a portion of that green and, and kinda goes up, up to the, up to the street to the.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Twenty-five hundred as well as the other one down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And like I said, this is all for just a, this is all a rezone, this is the first step in the process. Like, like you saw Jan, it's, it's, it's a long, it could be a long process, you know, a lot of things that have to be satisfied in order for it.
Well, I started counting steps and I thought, yeah, I, I've lost track after about seven.
Well, and you, you know, the way it's diagrams too, you know, it depends on if, if you, if you get through one step, how, what.
What happens after that?
Exactly, so, and, and, you know, I get lost in it too.
My gosh.
So.
I so don't get this.
But, but we're not the only community struggling. Professionally, I, I do a lot, you know. My, granted, my lots are not residential lots, mostly they're commercial, large scale commercials, but it's the same process, you know.
And this just changed, this whole concept. I just want everyone to know that it just changed this year.
And with regard to flood plains, you know, there, there is the risk of, of quite an approval process for that as well. You know, there's, there's, again, there's one that I'm working on, it's an eighteen, my eighteen month review process for, for flood plains in certain instances.
Correct.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jared, real quick, this, this proposed rezone tonight follows the general plan, right?
Does.
Nothing that varies, I want.
It does follow the general plan right now, exactly. So as a, as a commission, you know, as a city council too, you have to provide viable justification for going against the, uh, the ordinance and, and the general plan. And in this, in the case of the commission, we did not see a viable justification to, to do that, so we, we, we recommended it.
Okay, thank you.
Just doing our due diligence, right? Try to do our best every day, right? Some days. Appreciate it. Some days I like to sleep in. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a few of them, huh? Yeah, a few of them, alright, anything else? Thank you very much. Thanks Jared, appreciate it. Go Braves.
Yes, go Braves, please, please go Braves.
I'll, I'll try to help, yeah. Alright, next item on the agenda is a rezone for the Weineger property, um, from A two to eighteen five. What's that?
That's this.
That's this, mm-hmm.
Okay, so my question is, is once, or if, I should say, it is rezoned, what does that mean agriculturally wise, so that there's no more, I mean, can they?
Yes.
Use this as, use it as.
Yes, yes, it can still be used as anything because it's not subdivided yet.
Perfect, that's, that was my question.
Could still use it as horse property.
Yes.
It just, it could go down to that, but it doesn't have to go down to that. And we can't tell, because it meets the general plan, we can't tell the owner, no.
Right.
Legally.
We, we've used this general plan as our bible. And that was one thing we said when we passed this was, we're not gonna deviate from that because it just creates that image of, we're just doing these for people, and, I mean, this plan was done in seventeen.
Right.
You know, there was no plan for development at the time. Um, this is what we came up with, with professional help and, you know, um.
And like the commissioner said, we could be looking at eighteen months of environmental review.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's things that we have to go through to, or they, you know, the developer will have to go through before.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't do it, we just review it.
We just review it, okay, so then I will make a motion to approve the rezone of the Weineger property over Mountain LLC from A two to RE eighteen point five.
It's ordinance twenty twenty-five oh-six.
Twenty twenty-five oh-six, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Alright. Motion discussion on the auditor's proposal. Um, reading through the packet, I did kinda catch a skippy on this. I, I, I wouldn't wanna do that to them or, or try to hold it to them, but, uh, on the, the party that, uh, one of the parties that submitted, we only had two, right?
Right.
Um, their last year, they were only gonna charge us fourteen hundred dollars. So it was a typo, right, every year was fourteen thousand, but, so I called Ryan and I says, hey, it's cheaper the other way bud, but, um, Ryan has worked with both of these auditors, as he states in his letter, and, um, finds both of them to be respectable and, and good, good auditors. And so with his recommendation, I think, uh, we should go with the one that costs us about two grand less a year.
Is that Ulrich?
Yeah, Ulrich, Ulrich and. And Associates, okay, I didn't know if they had more names. I know you guys like to draw things out. So, as they get more partners, they just straight link them the name, right? But Ul, Ulrich and Associates, um, I wrote it down over the next four years. It would come to fifty, forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which we have to do it every year anyway, so.
Is that a guarantee, so if we decide in the third year we wanna switch, can we still do that, or is the contract written for that yet?
Is, I mean, we would, we would accept the proposal as written.
Right.
So it, it would be till twenty twenty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be locked in for the four years?
For four years.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Actually, it would be, wouldn't it be twenty-five? It's five year, cause they'd be this year as well, right? End, end of year this year. And I think on the page right before that, it said the cost. Yeah, it's ten thousand six hundred this year.
I do think in the proposal for the RFP, there was a sentence.
Please.
The RFP, that there was a sentence that, I mean, we have the right to evaluate whether to continue or not, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. More of a technicality than anything, but any contract should have that in there, in my opinion. Hopefully, it's more of a technicality than.
Any other comments or questions? How about a motion?
I motion that we, um, approve the auditor proposal from Ulrich and Associates for the next five years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, business licenses, short list, I can read them. Blue Collar Cuts, um, Rockin' M Grading and Landscaping, um, Drain and Clean Spas LLC, Barker Motors, Totally Blinds, Emma's Cotton Candy, and Real Estate Connection.
That's a solicitor.
Solicitor. And just a reminder on these solicitors, when they come around in the summer, they need to have a badge. Well, I, I'm just saying, they need to have a badge issued from the city.
With a picture?
Yep, it'll have their picture, we make them do a, a background check before they come knocking on people's doors. So if you do see somebody, like, I want these guys to be able to do it and make their money, and, and, I mean, they're, most of them are away from their homes, but we just need to remind them to, to do it the right way and come through the city and, and get their solicitor's badges.
Keep the residents safe.
So, yep, it's all about protecting this residence, huh?
What color is the badge this year?
Green.
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 So.
That, that card changes every year, I'm assuming?
It does.
Yeah.
Calendar here, okay.
I didn't know that. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the business licenses and the solicitor. Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thanks, uh, let's pay the bills.
Okay.
Councilman Penuzzio, I'm not gonna read them all off.
Okay.
Hey, so I see on here the fireworks, is that amount, is that just for the Fourth of July? Do you see that?
Yes.
It's about halfway down, okay.
Yep.
Not bad.
Uh-uh.
I don't know who negotiated that, but good job.
The fire chief does that.
Good job, fire chief.
Yeah.
Is the lift station number nine, Dan, is that a repair, is that something that we are rebuilding?
He's, he said rehab for Luigi, he doesn't have the bills in front of him.
Sorry, my radio's going off, I had a mute.
I was gonna say, I think it was these radio talking.
I think he was talking to. I'm reading these.
Here, do you want me?
I, I can lend you mine.
If I squint hard enough, I can see it.
I'm past that point, I have to. Squinting doesn't work.
I think he's just shy.
Alright, I'm ready for a motion when you are.
Alright, we know Luigi is, so. I will make a motion to pay the warrant register for March nineteenth to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call, Luigi.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, I should've called you Councilman Penuzzio. Councilman Ferro.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Alright, um, reports, Councilman, uh, Penuzzio.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Ferro?
Uh, the only thing I have is I was able to attend the Washington Front Regional Council, the TAC, uh, com meeting with, for the Ogden and Leighton area last Wednesday. We voted on several projects, uh, both in Davis and Weber County. My mic is, it's on break every so many seconds here tonight. Um, there were several road projects to, to better the, the two counties, and then also some, some sidewalks or safe sidewalk programs, and some other things with trails and streets, uh, scapes to help the flow of traffic, not only with vehicles, but also pedestrian traffic as well. Um, the WACOG funding, I don't know if we've ever used WACOG, yes, Dan says yes.
Many, many times.
Um, the letters of intent are due the first Monday of May, and then that's when the process starts. For those of you that don't know who, uh, what the WACOG program is, it's funding through the, uh, Weber County to help cities in the county with road projects, sidewalks, different things, active transportation projects and several things. Um, everybody has to pan to it, so we might as well take advantage of it, um, where we can to improve our roads. We've heard quite a few of you tonight, uh, worried about the road, the, the, the road system, the transportation there, not only with the roads, but sidewalks, and this is one area to get the funding to help with that, where the developers won't pay for it in certain areas, cause they're not developing a particular stretch of road, right? So, anyway, that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thanks, thanks for attending. Councilwoman Bill?
Of course, um, the Western Weber CTC has a lot of programs that are gonna be going on. I'm gonna have it posted to the unofficial Facebook site, as well as the Plain City's official Facebook site. But just a quick sum up, uh, there's Guiding Good, um, okay, I can't read my, my writing, but it's a free five week workshop, um, to help, um, parenting, it's gonna be on Tuesdays from six PM to eight PM, starting on April twenty-second. Uh, the next one is gonna be the National Take Back Prescription Day at the Kent's Pharmacy, starting, or it's on April twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two PM. And then there's gonna be Hope Night on April twenty-eighth at Fremont. It's a free activities, lots of food, fun, and a speaker at five thirty to eight PM. Again, at Fremont, I'll post the flyers, so everyone come out, have fun. And that's the Western Weber CTC, it's communities that care, they do a lot of free activities, and we'll be posting everything that they, that they do.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson? You got one more?
I do have one more. Um, Totally Blind and all of the other local businesses are gonna be doing an Easter egg hunt. And if you follow them on their Facebook and Instagram, they're gonna be posting clues, and they're gonna be hiding Easter eggs all throughout the community in Plain City. And there's going to be a lot of fun prizes, I don't know if they want you to know what the prizes are, but they're great. So look for the Easter eggs, look for the clues, um, follow Totally Blind and the other businesses, local businesses on Facebook and Instagram. Look for the Easter eggs, find the eggs, they're great prizes, I promise, okay.
This, and this is actually kinda more for adults.
Yeah.
You know, youth, it's, it's not just for the littles, you know, we take care of the littles out here.
The, the two top grand prizes are like two, worth two thousand dollars.
Yeah. So, so anyway.
Council meetings is the first and third Thursday here at six thirty, every first and third Thursday at six thirty.
Yep.
And planning is the opposite.
Is the, the second and fourth Thursday at seven.
Yep, jump on the website and click on that, and then it'll just email you.
It will email you every time.
Yep. Okay, I just have one quick thing, I did receive a letter in the mail from Central Weber. So this is not Plain City Sewer, just so nobody panics. We do have, I don't know what, a couple hundred residents that are connected to, to Cent, yeah, a little over a hundred that are connected to Central Weber, they're up on the east end of town. Um, they listed a couple projects that they've got going on, and so they will possibly be raising their fees. Um, if you're inside the district, it'll go to thirty-two eighty-two, if you're outside the district, it's fifty-five thirty, and impact fees will increase to thirty-five seventy-five. So, like I said, this is not Plain City's sewer fees, this is the sewer district that doesn't affect the majority at all, right? There's only a hundred and some people that are connected to that, but I figured I'd give them an update on that, so they could be aware. Um, other than that, uh, Dan's taken some, most of the plows off the trucks. I think we're, we're done, we might have to spread some salt now and again if we get another couple of these
I'm like, wait.
Little storms that come through, but.
I'm like, I think it's gonna snow tomorrow.
Yeah.
I think it's supposed to.
It's alright, it's alright, we can handle it, huh? We can, we can hook them back up pretty quick, so, but he's, he's getting ready to, to start summer activities, and so, um, just so everybody's aware of that. Um, I don't know if anybody's looked out the window and seen how green our grass is out there. Our parks are looking phenomenal, and that's due to early fertilization and just great caretaking of our parks. So thanks to, to everybody who takes care of that. Um, our inside staff has been amazing, we've had a wounded soldier, kinda the head of the, the whole, whole deal here, and, and everybody has just stepped up and, and helped her, and she's been working from home and just can't thank the, the, the inside staff enough for, uh, keeping the wheels on the bus spinning and, and, and picking up the, wherever they can to help, so thank you, thank you to everybody. And, uh, with that, I just need one more motion.
Officer Penuzzio, stay safe. Motion to dismiss.
I will, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, meetings adjourned, thank you.
Maybe, hello? Hello, when I'm on Zoom? Before you adjourn? Hello?